Thank you everyone for coming out on a cold wet evening. You all have, you all win the gold star as far as civic participation. Not only have you gotten your ballot in presumably before eight o'clock. This is why you're here, but you're also here to take the next step of being engaged with your community. So thank you. This is a hybrid meeting, so we have folks online as well as here live at the Congregational Church in SoCal. And of course, anyone is welcome from any part of the county or the first district. But the focus tonight is on issues for the SoCal area. When we go to question and answers at the end of the presentation, we'll start with the online audience and then take questions, or sorry, start with the live audience and then take questions online. And so to make sure that folks here in the live audience can be seen online, just ask that you come up to the front to share your question, that way the mic will pick you up and we can also get you on camera as well. And if you are in the online audience, you can use the raise hand button at the, in reactions at the bottom of your screen to indicate that you have a question you want to ask. The agenda for tonight, I'll talk about some transportation projects that will be getting started here shortly, the SoCal Drive multimodal project, as well as the Highway One auxiliary lane project. Then we'll talk about housing in throughout the county where kind of major crossroads with some major planning efforts for housing. Then touch a little bit on water and a few different specific projects in this area, including the Kaiser Medical Office Building Proposal, Park Haven Plaza, Senior Care Facility. It's moving forward on SoCal Drive. And then the Verizon Cell Tower, Call to Artists for the Heart of SoCal Park. Brief update on homelessness and then that Q and A. So I'll try to move through the content pretty quick and if anything you guys have more questions about, we can address that then. So the SoCal Drive buffered and protected bike lane project and congestion mitigation project. Should be breaking ground now, probably first quarter of next year, we're looking at earliest December, but probably more like January, February. And this project will put in buffered and protected bike lanes along SoCal Drive from Harbor High School all the way to State Park Drive in Aptos. It will also update 22 traffic signals so that they are basically smart, they'll literally be wired together with fiber and can be adaptive to make sure that we get the highest flow possible and least traffic possible on SoCal Drive. It'll also be a bunch of bike, or sorry, pedestrian improvements, 94 new ADA ramp upgrades, 11 enhanced rapid flashing beacons installed. So that will really help get traffic moving on SoCal Drive. We actually have already installed a number of these smart signals. Working collaboratively with the city of Capitola and with Caltrans as well. So these ones through the village, you may have noticed them starting to act a little bit differently, have been installed and we're starting to learn from them and improve them. And then these three in the middle, the red ones here are by Caltrans. And they've installed smart signals there. And then the blue ones here are owned by the city of Capitola. So those have been installed, installed as well. Now, over the next few months, we'll actually get all three of these systems talking together so that you can easily get from one side of the highway to the other without running into too many red lights. The, as I said though, the SoCal Drive project will put in an additional bunch of these smart signals. Then there's the Highway One auxiliary lane and bus on shoulder project, which should be breaking ground. Also in potentially as soon as December, but more likely Q1 of next year and then continuing for the next year. So this will create, continue those auxiliary lanes like we have today between SoCal Drive and Morristy, where sort of those entry exit lanes. And they'll also continue under the, under passes so that the bus can use those lanes and move more continuously on the highway. You can see it's a three-phase project, phases one and phase two are fully funded. So I mentioned that this phase will start construction in the next few months. Phase two should start construction later next year. That'll go from 41st to State Park Drive. And then we're seeking funding right now for phase three from State Park Drive to Freedom Boulevard. So once we get all three of those constructed, it really that last phase from State Park to Freedom will mean that we then have that auxiliary lane all the way until we get to the, you get to three lanes on the highway again, south of Freedom, that should really provide about 80% of the relief when we finish the project and get all the way to there. We're looking at it also as a multimodal project throughout each phase. So putting in new bike and pedestrian over crossings in each section, as well as I mentioned, trying to improve the service for the bus. And there's also a second phase of the SoCal Drive project, which we're currently applying for funding for from the state. This is for, to use the gas tax money SB1. The application will be submitted this December. And we'll extend the SoCal Drive project from State Park Drive all the way to Freedom, as well as make a number of improvements for the bus running on SoCal Drive. So not only adding two new zero emission buses, all electric buses for cross-country, cross-county routes. Installing in lane bus boarding platforms at 34 different locations along SoCal Drive. So it's a little bit faster and you have level boardings. Adding bus shelters at 40 locations, providing solar powered, real-time arrival displays at 41 locations. And that's also, we're putting real-time bus locators on all the buses. So you'll know like your bus will be arriving in five minutes, 10 minutes, as well as automatic passenger counters on all the buses so that we know where they're getting the most utilization. And we can also improve the routes. So a number of improvements there. That's all I've got for transportation. Moving on to housing. The sustainability update to the County General Plan and County Code is coming to a decision point here at our next Board of Supervisors meeting on November 15th, next Tuesday, and the two meetings in December. The sustainability update deals a lot with various policies to help facilitate infill housing. And it's based on this idea of the 15-minute neighborhood. The idea that you can walk out your door, get on a bike and get to all the major services you'd need. Whether that's work or educational, a school, a grocery store, a park or, or healthcare. And so that's really the goal of the sustainability update. And the reason it's called a sustainability update, even though it deals largely with housing, is that when we look at our emissions for our community, half of our emissions come from passenger vehicles. So not only us driving around, but also people driving into our urban core to provide services. So by building more housing and building more walkable communities, so really mixed use development with both housing and shopping. It makes it easier for you to get to the store. It also makes it easier for people to live close to where they work. This is a county plan. So just to distinguish between the unincorporated county, which is this colored area you see here on the map, it includes SoCal, of course, Live Oak, Pleasure Point and Aptos. Then there, there are four cities in there that the plan does not include. Watsonville, the city of Santa Cruz, the city of Scotts Valley and Capitola. So we talk about the sustainability update, it's mostly for these unincorporated parts of the county. It also includes design guidelines to try to streamline the process by telling developers what kind of design we expect, including parking in the rear of buildings, setbacks on upper stories after two stories, so that buildings look less imposing. And various other design features, you know, roof line and height variations. Again, to keep buildings looking more interesting and less imposing. Most of the sustainability update deals just with policies themselves, but there are a couple of rezonings proposed. So the two major ones are on Thurber and SoCal Drive, Pumpkin Pumpkin Patch and soon to be Christmas Tree Farm. That's about five acres that's proposed to be used for, again, mixed-use development. And some parcels along Portola Drive. And the idea with, with both of those areas is really to create, again, a community gathering spaces. The parcel at Thurber and SoCal, there's options to connect to Winkle Park, which is a county park back there. There's also some empty county land that's by that park to either extend the park or also contribute more housing to the area. As I said, the, the next few Board of Supervisors meetings will really be focusing on the sustainability update. However, it is sort of the first step in terms of housing and, and more infill development in our community. The next is the housing element. It's a part of our general plan. And every eight years, the state issues what's called RENA numbers or our Regional Housing Needs Assessment. And they give us a set of, of housing goals that we then have to incorporate into our zoning map. And that then allows private home builders to add the housing that this, this state is saying we need. So in, we're just finishing up the fifth cycle of RENA and entering the sixth cycle. You can see that we've only built about half of what was, what was asked of us in the fifth cycle or 744 units over the last eight years. And in the next cycle, we're being asked to increase the, the number of housing that we put on our zoning map by 3.5 times. So adding another 4,634 units to the zoning map. You know, the county by and large does not actually build housing. And so, you know, we can't be held responsible if that housing doesn't actually get built, as with the last cycle that, you know, we've only reached 56%. But we do have to lay the groundwork in terms of adding it to the zoning map and generally speaking, trying to reduce barriers to, to adding more housing. So, and I should say that we, the housing element will be updated over the course of the next year. We are required to submit it to the state by the end of 2023 in December. If we don't, if we don't have a valid housing element that incorporates these new numbers they're asking of us, then what's hap, what happens is called, what's called the builder's remedy, where essentially developers can propose whatever they want and it gets automatically approved. There's a number of cities down in Southern California that's a little bit ahead of us in this process, notably Santa Monica, where they're out of compliance for 10 days and 5,000 new units were automatically approved. So we really want to make sure we get this in on time. Because this is a pretty large change for our community. The, I proposed and the board is, has asked that we put together a citizens' assembly for the housing element. This will ensure that we have representative input from everyone in the community, including renters and people of all ages and demographics. So what this, it, it looks very similar to jury selection in that we'd mail out invitations to be part of the citizens' assembly and, you know, provide people a stipend to participate over the course of probably a couple of months. One, one or two sessions a week. And then ultimately the citizens' assembly would make a recommendation for the housing element and where to put, where to change zoning and where to put different densities. This has been done in a number of other communities, including most recently in Petaluma on how to reimagine and reuse their fairground space in Eugene, Oregon for a similar housing exercise. And actually in Paris, France, they've created a permanent citizens' assembly, which addresses a rotating variety of issues. I want to talk briefly about water because when we talk about housing, people always wonder where the water is going to come from. And so this is what the graph you see here on the screen is showing the rainfall over the last 100 years in our county. And you can see that it varies quite a bit. So even though that black line there is the average, we almost never have an average rainfall year. We either get a whole lot or very little. And really what our water agencies are trying to protect against are sustained multi-year drought. Similar to the big dry that they had in Australia, which was nine years of drought, which pretty much just strapped everyone. And it really, you know, it doesn't matter if we have those additional 5,000 units of housing or not. If we run into a sustained multi-year drought like that, we're all in trouble. The good news is that we do have two, two strategies moving forward and both are promising in terms of being able to provide a water supply during a multi-year drought. The first is Pure Water SoCal, which is will create recycled water. The facility is being built now. You may have seen it start to go up by the Sheriff's Center. And this is an advanced water purification system. You've probably also ran into the construction on SoCal Drive where the streets have been all torn up. It was on Broadway before that. And so that is the conveyance pipe coming from the wastewater treatment plant in the city of Santa Cruz at Neri Lagoon, where it's already been treated to a quality where we pump it out to the ocean, most of our wastewater. That water will then be pumped over to this center near the Sheriff's Center and treated through another four or five steps. And to really drinking level quality and stored in the mid-county groundwater basin injected into the groundwater. In addition to that, we've also been doing tests on aquifer storage and recovery. So again, to go back to this, you know, if we can just take the tall blue line there and save it for a dry year, we're in pretty good shape. The challenge is right now, we only have Lock Lowman as far as a store, water storage facility. And what we've been experimenting with is taking water from the city of Santa Cruz, which gets all their water or 96% of their water from, from San Ramon's River and North Coast streams. So surface water and injecting it into the groundwater basin, basically using the groundwater basin, the aquifer as a storage facility. The tests have been extremely successful, both in terms of we have enough wells to turn them in reverse and inject water instead of taking it out. So we, we have the capacity there. There haven't been any issues as far as chemical leaching with a different type of water and different pipes. And the, the aquifer actually holds water. So all the tests are green and go, and we're actually moving to two production wells, meaning in a production level quality of injecting the surface water into the groundwater basin this coming year. All right, now just talk a little bit about a few different projects in the area. The first is the proposed Kaiser Medical Office Building, also over off of SoCal Avenue next to the Sheriff's Center. This project was delayed a little bit, but there is going to be a community meeting to discuss traffic mitigation proposals within the next month. They're talking around either the end of this month or early next month. And then hearings at the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors will be in February or March of next year. Park Haven Plaza, this is the 36-unit project over on Park Avenue, is also the, starting to, to break ground. 15 of the 36 units are in production at, at Factory OS. This is modular based construction. So it's the units are being built in a factory and will be shipped to the site already completed and then just assembled. So that'll both speed up the process and also reduce just the, the impact of the, and noise of construction. The site work has commenced and tree protection fencing is in place. And then soil excavation will likely start this week after this rain system moves through. There are signs up at the site that list contact information for the project manager if you have any questions. And you can also email info@novandevolution.com. So you may have also noticed some prep work happening at 5630 SoCal Drive. This is over by the Farm Park and Cuniston Lane, the former Interlight Ministries site. Eighty, an 80-unit senior care and memory care facility is planned for this site. And right now they have a demolition permit and rest grading permit. So that's what you're seeing happening there. And we expect their building permit, which is in progress, to be issued by the end of the month. We just put out a call to artists for the Heart of SoCal Park. That's the beautiful walkway that goes from the, the heart of SoCal Park. And then of course, over behind SoCal Elementary. This is a grant opportunity for $27,000 for a site-specific public art component to the Parkway. And if you are interested or know anyone who's interested, you can apply at scparks.com. The deadline is December 16th.
Can you give a little bit more to what exactly that project is? What artists to do?
I think it's pretty open-ended. I, I haven't dove into any specifics for what's being asked. I think it's just a site-specific artwork. So I mean, it could be, it's a physical piece. So I mean, having just done this for the Live Oak Library Annex over at Simpkins, you know, we looked at panels or sculptures made of wood or metal. You know, I'm sure you could propose doing some kind of artwork on the path itself, potentially, if you had the right way to seal it. I think it's whatever an artist wants to submit. The Verizon Cell Tower is now live at the Seventh Day Adventist site. It was like, went live on October 11th. And should be providing much improved cell service for this area. You can see on the left what cell service looked like before the tower and now what it looks like with the tower, a lot more green, which means that you can get good cell service in buildings. And with the county, we're negotiating at least to add first responder equipment to the tower to improve service for fire and sheriff and ambulance as well. Finally, over the last couple of weeks, we just finished clearing the Benchlands encampment in downtown Santa Cruz. This, there was about 300 people there. Everyone was offered some kind of shelter at the city overlook camp at De La Viega or on, at the River Street Camp. Only about 30% of campers accepted these alternative accommodations. And so we do still have capacity at both of those camps. We did, we've, we've issued over $2 million in housing vouchers to people who were asked to leave the site for permanent housing. And planning is underway for additional shelter options. We've also increased funding for the Downtown Streets team and cleanup and remediation of other sites. And the goal long-term is to incorporate some or, or involve people who are experiencing homelessness in more programs like the Downtown Streets team and to actually taking care of the river and the, the area which has been largely impacted by those encampments in the past. It's also, you know, there are multiple reasons for clearing this particular encampment. One, a very large visible encampment like that tends to attract more people. And two, it's just an incredibly environmentally sensitive area. And of course, as we start to see rains and it, it's very likely that area will flood. So good that we got everyone out of there. Finally, here we are on election night and when the polls close at eight o'clock, the clerk of elections will release the count of ballots that has happened, of mail-in ballots from up to about a couple of days ago, when they had to, they were counting all the ballots and then to drop that in order to make last minute preparations for election day. But at eight o'clock, they'll release that first blush of ballots. It should be significant amounts and so many people in our community vote by mail. And we'll have a good sense of how the local, local races and elections are going. You can again, check the data yourself at votescount.us. And then click on that November 8th, 2022 statewide general election button there in the upper left.
Sort of having a party at the station of the county building today or?
I imagine there will be a party.
I haven't been there for four or five years.
Yeah, I, I'm, I, I imagine that poll workers, once they manage to get everything locked down and zipped up and all the votes posted. I don't know where they'll be partying. Yes. Uh huh. They'll, they'll, they'll be working hard tonight. Don't worry. All right. Um, that's all I've got as far as a presentation. Happy to take questions now. We'll start with the online audience. Or sorry, the, the live audience. And if, again, if you could just come stand here so that the folks online can see you and we can capture your voice.
So I just have a question about the protected bike heads on SoCal Drive. I thought there was going to be a succeeding bike and, and this year.
Right. So the, the construction will start at the beginning of next year, most likely. We just signed off on the final plans for them a couple of weeks ago. Then we've got to take those plans to the state to get sign-offs. They're providing a lot of the grant money for it. And then once we've got the money in hand, we'll, we'll start construction early next year. Now, it's relatively simple as far as a construction, as construction projects go. So I do think that we'll be able to get it built pretty quick and should be done by the end of next year for sure.
So one more question about the Mar Vista Drive.
Right. So the question is about Mar Vista Drive over crossing. That is part of phase two here of the auxiliary lane bus on shoulder project. You can see it's that loop right there. And so that phase is fully funded and expected to start construction next year, including the Mar Vista over crossing. Yeah.
Not really construction, but is it a way that we can put like a crosswalk on, on Porter? Where, where the park starts? Because it's up now and it's blocking the doctor's office and, and the drive-through that you drive through to go down the ramp to get into that parking area.
Right. There's a, you're saying there is a crosswalk there now.
There is, but it
Right.
It doesn't need to be there. It needs to be moved down where people can actually cross to get into the park. And it's not blocking like coming out of that small area. There's trucks that come down and there's people and you can't see when somebody's going out. And there've been a couple of wrecks there where somebody's driven in.
Yep.
And the car's trying to drive out and they don't see each other because of the way it's framed up. It's not great.
Okay. Yeah, we probably want to address that in, in this project, but I'm happy to look into it and discuss options with Public Works on where we can move the crosswalk. And I'll follow up with you on your specific suggestions. Yeah.
Just wondering if there's any plans for the, this intersection out here Porter and SoCal Drive. Coming down from Port, from Old San Jose Road is always a nightmare, especially now that four o'clock in the afternoon, people don't know quite which lane to get into. Seems to be blocked because a lot of people have turned left and people tend to stay in their right lane and then cut off the people that are in the left lane to go straight. And just wondering if there's any plans to rectify that.
So they're certainly funding both for the SoCal Drive project. And then also we do have funding to update SoCal San Jose Road all the way from that intersection up to Laurel Road. So those bottom three miles. So between those two projects, I'm, I'm sure we could look at it and, and make some improvements there. Yeah. I'd, I'd have to look at, I'm sorry, what's your name, sir? Hans. Yeah. If, if I can get your contact information either there or, or after this, I can follow up with you with your specific ideas on that. And we can, I'll review those proposals with Public Works and see if there's an option we could, we could go with. Any other questions here?
That one out and there are some of us that live on roads off of Glen Haven, like that cover. And we want to know how that vote is going to happen and how it would impact homeowners on that.
Yeah. Right. Okay. So the question was about the survey for a resurfacing project on Glen Haven Road and how it would impact a different residents on neighboring roads. So Ken Olin has offered to pay for the engineering study for Um, so Ken Olin has offered to pay for the engineering study for um basically a an improvement district that would fund that resurfacing project. Um, and once that, so we're we're undertaking that now. What it'll do is both determine exactly what the best project is, but also how much uh each parcel would be responsible for. And the district will basically scale the contribute uh contribution that would be required from each parcel to the benefit. So for example, if you're on Prescott Road, which cuts off from Glen Haven relatively early, then you're only benefiting from that lower portion of Glen Haven Road. So it it probably would not be a very big assessment. So, right, so the. Right, so.
Done, so all of our Prescott is filling with food. How much all been addressed if our road repairs? So does that mean our roads will then be repaired as a result or will the repair be done prior to this proposal?
So I'm not sure if you're talking about Prescott Road or Glen Haven Road as far as. Mm hmm.
For a county service area.
Right.
But is that mean our roads will get picked up?
So the assessment that's being considered is just for a Glen Haven Road resurfacing project. So, um, I I mean, and we haven't considered one for Prescott Road, although we could. I mean, that we're going through as a county and certainly doing uh whatever road repairs we can. Um, I mean, for example, on this past year on Upper Glen Haven, we went and did some pretty extensive, uh, you know, digouts and repaving of of uh potholes where we could as well as ditch work. Um, so I can see where we are as far as uh Prescott Road, as far as that level of service.
Excuse me, supervisor, um, just received some reports that uh.
Are you, ma'am? If you want to, if you want, if you had, if you had, want to finish your question, you can either come back up here or I can.
I I live on Glen Haven.
Uh huh, could you could you just come up?
Yes, the only on online audience is having difficulty hearing the questions. Thank you.
Does the whole thing get repaved, like the tear it all out and really repave it or just catch the whole? What does resurfacing mean?
The the whole thing would get resurfaced if the um if the project was approved.
Well, because I live in a straight area, around a curve that they've been like all ass down Glen Haven. It's twenty five miles. They're not going twenty five. They're going like forty forty. Had on a hundred deer hit in front of my house, so our accidents. So that's my concern. I live on Lower Glen Haven. Um, so to have the Speedway now put in is a concern. So that's that's my question. And plus I could pay the road maintenance on my taxes. I'm not sure why I have to pay money.
Sure. Well, uh, as as far as the security or safety piece of it, I think we'd have to look at it's what specifically we could do from an engineering perspective uh to make a road safer. I mean, a lot of the time what we will um work on is is either speed tables um or, you know, try to reduce the speed limit where possible.
Well, the speed limit's slower already.
Right, right. Yeah.
People have.
Right.
Right.
Mm hmm.
Um, and, you know, you have the speed bumps because it's too.
Um, sure, sure. Yeah.
So that's, I think, a real a concern where we are on Glen Haven where, you know, people go too fast.
Mm hmm.
If we pave it all, then I feel like.
Be Speedway, right.
Yeah, so sometimes problems are not.
Okay.
Like the speed bump and we had to go down. I'll just throw a little bit more onto that because we live up two miles up from the nation. And that's an area where you just resurface for a few hundred yards.
Mm hmm.
And that's that's the boat zone. As soon as cars hit that newly resurfaced area, it's beautiful. I mean, they're they're fifty miles an hour.
Mm hmm.
And it's extremely dangerous. And so you'll find, uh, number one, a lot of people now realize that paving Glen Haven Road might not be such a good idea. And if you do that with a private district like you were talking about, we're worried about liability. What liability do we have to assume if we're taking that road under our jurisdiction? Somebody gets a wreck on it or they suing us, they suing the county or what?
Mm hmm. Yeah, I'm not aware that it creates any additional liability for you, but I and I can double check that for sure.
Road.
Yeah.
That you have now told us that we have to form a road company to get it resurfaced and then paid for. That's that's unlike anything around here. That's a yard to count. It really is.
Mm hmm.
And I I I think there's a lot of people who are pretty much opposed to setting up that kind of private road on a county road and then having to pay for it for twenty years.
Mm hmm.
And then assuming the liability.
Mm hmm.
You know.
So I. It it wouldn't turn it into a private road. So I don't think that you'd assume any additional liability. I mean, I can happy to double check that. Uh, I mean, to answer both your question, both of your questions about why the heck am I being asked to pay for this? Um, we just don't have the money the way our our county government is set up. And I'm having, you know, it's a fairly long explanation, um, but to try to make it summarize as much as possible. Basically, when Prop thirteen passed in nineteen seventy eight, we got fixed into very low share of the property taxes coming back to the county. We only get thirteen cents of every dollar you pay. Uh, we have more roads per capita than just about any other uh county. And so maintaining, you know, over five hundred miles of of roads in the county becomes basically impossible on our current budget. And our our only other art, we basically have two options, which are uh to go back and change the state formulas, which is going to take a majority of the the legislature, um, which is is not going to be an easy task or to pass the statewide ballot initiative. Uh, and those cost twelve million dollars on average just to get uh just to get on the ballot. Um, so that's why we were looking at the possibility of a of an improvement district because that's a a lot more easy to control. And and if you don't want to vote for it, you don't have to. Uh, I don't think you'd assume any liability, though.
Okay, because I'm, I would rather have you, after having seen this few hundred yards, a beautifully repaved road that's a launching ramp, even for those big trucks that are going out there. I'd rather have you fix the potholes and repaint the whole road.
Okay, understood.
Who are you going to talk anything about downtown SoCal?
Do you have a question?
Yeah, is there anything you can do to stop people from riding through the park? You know, the the parking lot and going up the ramp so they can miss the light.
I see. So the question is, what can we do uh to prevent people from driving through the heart of SoCal Park as a a way to cut around traffic?
Yes.
Uh, I don't.
And where are you going to get rid of the trees and in the front and fix sidewalks and all the trumble stuff and that? My son had to get up on the roof to get the leaves because it was fogging the rain. And it was.
Yeah.
Coming into a bar.
So there are a couple. So the one question was, uh, you know, what are we going to do about the sidewalks and the trees uh which are causing maintenance issues? So part of the SoCal um drive project, we we are planning on removing a couple of those trees which have been problematic. Uh, both in terms of the the leaves that that have fallen and and blocked drains and also that are uh tearing up the sidewalk now. Um, so I think there's three trees scheduled to come out. Um, uh, right, right along that middle stretch there. Um, and I'd have to get back to you on what we could do as far as preventing people from cutting through the park. I don't have an answer off the top of my head, but I can look at it.
Have to eat.
Okay. Yeah, right.
Um, I have a question on the old San Jose Road upgrade. You're going to do a refab. Uh, sits on the uh live on San Jose Road. What involvement can we get in as uh, you know, participants of that and stakeholders in that road before a lot of decisions are made and decisions are done to give us input?
Yeah, great question. So the question is, what uh can folks who live on SoCal San Jose Road do to provide input on those in uh improvements before they happen? Um, I'm happy to find some ways for for public engagement, whether it's a meeting at Mountain School there. Um, or, you know, in addition to an online survey, I mean, you're also welcome to directly reach out to me in my office uh and with any specific suggestions you have. But um, yeah, I can organize some of events before any decisions are made.
Right, in the in the, there must be some sort of plan and uh plan for that and certainly you and that and is public input part of that you do process?
Yeah, I mean, we we can certainly incorporate it.
Okay, okay. Um, great, yeah, yeah, because there's a lot of that. Um, and another thing is on the on the, just a general press, on the five thousand units we get being proposed to build in there, it's ninety years ahead. And I guess uh especially on sustainability aspect of it, how uh what is this county or the city's involvement within? How are these things going to be um, you know, with the phase out of gas and engines on provisions for people charging their cars that will be a reality? And how is that to be done? Is it just built out as a minimal code that you're following? Were you leaning into it to completely address what we get future issue?
Mm hmm. Yeah, we don't have anything that requires charging stations and multifamily developments yet, but um it's certainly on my mind. And I I know we're, uh, like I said, updating the climate action plan as well. And so that might be a strategy that we bring forward as some kind of requirement around a number of uh, in a certain number per per occupant or unit of uh of electric car charging stations.
Okay.
And and what was your name, sir? I want to be.
Bill Miller.
Bill Miller, all right. Um, yeah, I'll get I'll get back to you on some opportunities um for public feedback on SoCal San Jose Road. And if you want to take one of my cards here and and email me a specific suggestion, I'd be happy to hear it.
Um, it's quite, I I'm kind of a broken record in some respects because a third, I'm on Thurber Lane, as you know.
Yep.
And personally, Thurber Lane beats in SoCal Drive. And with all the construction that's going to be going on, are there any plans to help to help resolve speeding on SoCal Drive? I know that, like I said, I'm a broken record because it's been a problem for years. And with the construction on the highway happening, that's going to put more pressure on SoCal Drive. And apparently simultaneous work going on, both areas at the same time. So it could be a risk for I might use the word disaster, but accidents because people don't pay attention to the lights that are going everywhere anyway. As well as people on bicycles and I've heard about the buffered bicycle lanes and that sort of thing, but the bicycles pay literally very little, any attention to the traffic lights anywhere, go right through them. So that's that's part one of my question. What's going to be done to control traffic speed if nothing else on SoCal Drive?
Mm hmm.
The other one, as as you already got approached on, are there's the initial speed bumps on uh Thurber Lanes? And that's becoming a greater concern for us because there are more and more families that are coming into the neighborhood. And of course, there are a lot of children who are walking back and forth to school for the whole story.
Mm hmm.
So I'd like to know at some point, plus when it happens, do you have a request for Thurber for Thurber Lane that's speed bumps?
Sure.
Thank you.
Well, as far as SoCal Drive, I don't I I don't know off the top of my head what we can do to to reduce speeds. Um, I mean, putting in buffered and protected bike lanes will pro- as well as um the various bust uh bus shelters and bus islands should visually constrict the roadway a little bit, and that tends to slow people down somewhat. Um, that might help a little. Um, as far as Thurber Lane goes and putting speed bumps in there, um, actually, we just sent out a survey this morning. Um, and I'll, I can follow up and make sure you got it and make sure it's posted in areas that it's accessible to people. Uh, but uh the goal being to poll your neighborhood with just a preliminary poll of how many people are interested in putting in speed bumps. Um, for for those of you who don't know, we get requests for speed bumps all the time. Um, and so there's a, we have a thirteen step process. Uh, and at some point, you do need to get a a signature from the majority of of uh residents who are affected, saying that they'd like those to go in um and also agree to some level of cost share. Um, so we were just doing a preliminary poll to see, uh, because I know I've heard both sides in your neighborhood. Um, so we wanted to get a sense of whether or not a majority supported uh putting in speed tables on Thurber as well as um looking into reducing the speed limit by five miles an hour on Thurber.
That to that point, you use the term speed tables. Is that is that for the flatter surface of the ministry?
Correct, yeah. Right.
The axle of our cars.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, and and so what, once we've gauged interest in uh, you know, whether or not a majority of the neighborhood supports some kind of device, um, if if so, Public Works would come out and look at exactly what the best spot and what type uh would be the most appropriate.
And I know there may be some options as far as designs.
Yeah, right. Sure. Oh, okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hans.
I have a question about some issue for water intrusion.
Uh huh.
Versatile water intrusion um into our water table. And um our our city working really closely with the water company to determine how long we can sustain um X amount of growth before that becomes an issue again, because I know that this seems to be a pressing issue now. And we're addressing the water um, the water projects, the purification is awesome. But at one point, that's only going to hold us for so many years. I anticipate the price of water going up and all that.
Mm hmm.
Is there a way for our city to ask for um especially areas that are incorporated or are directly affected by saltwater intrusion to the extent what we are to be exempt from having to meet those requirements for developments uh population growth in those areas? Because obviously we can't supply safe water demand. And if our groundwater table gets, you know, contaminated, then what do we do, kind of thing? So I guess my question is, where are we going with that? How many years do these take out with us before we lock down?
Yeah, um, well, first of all, the mid-county groundwater basin is considered a critical critically overdrafted basin. Uh, and so we're definitely on the state's radar. We we got priority in funding um for a number of projects, both monitoring wells as well as um the Pure Water SoCal Project um and a few other things. But to basically as a result of the fact that the state already knows we have an issue. Um, I'll also say that while we are required to put all those units on our zoning map um by the state, uh, the state does have multiple multiple agencies and they can conflict. So for example, in Monterey, uh, where they also have some pretty serious water restrictions, uh, there was, I think, a two hundred and fifty unit housing project uh that was approved. But then the state uh agency came in and said, sorry, you don't have enough water for this. So um, and what we're also looking at, including that in county codes as well, um, you know, ensuring that we have adequate water supply before any new development is approved.
That's great. I guess in addition to that, Ben, that's great to know. In addition to that, um, does that also appeal for secret projects or secret executive projects? Um, will they be recognized as and taken into consideration for um utilizing that kind of housing and um their watering is small enough?
Yeah, so I I mean. The, yeah, the the project would be held at the same standards whether or not it's uh, you know, requires an environmental impact report or not. Go ahead.
Yeah, come on. Hey, how's it going, friends? Um, I'm Darren. I live on North Main Street. I was curious, um, a couple of years ago, y'all built and extended the sidewalk along North Main Street. And the sidewalk came up short. It hasn't gone all the way to the Barjata Winery, which is where the crowds are, where the public is, where the York Fest is in two weeks. Um, we've talked with a number of county supervisors over the last eight years that I've lived here. Any updates on when we're going to find a little bit more sidewalks so that our neighbors' wheelchairs and with walking sticks can navigate? Because right now, for those of you that don't do that road every day, there's road, there's bike lane, and then it drops off into gravel. And this time of year, it turns into swamp.
Mm hmm.
And um, it's a major growth area. It is really close to the school.
Mm hmm.
So I was wondering if there were any updates on that. I I missed the presentation. I have to work so.
No worries.
Maybe it was slide one, and I'm sorry, it was.
It was not slide one. You didn't you didn't miss any updates, but Darren, yeah, thanks for the question. Um, I I am definitely aware that we need to extend the sidewalks there. Uh, have have heard from a number of schoolchildren. Um, I, I am definitely aware that we need to extend the sidewalks there, uh, have, have heard from a number of schoolchildren as well, asking uh, me to extend the sidewalks there. The latest update is that um, we just finished um, um, bike and pedestrian plan for the county. And we did include in there, there was a priority to create sidewalks there. Um, I know you're, you're thinking of great another county plan. Um, but, but um, you know, what that does is basically um, kind of set us up then to go and apply for grant funding. Um, because sidewalks are surprisingly expensive, I don't know how many millions that one's going to cost, but, but it uh, will be up there. Um, and so, but because it's identified as a priority in our plan, um, that's kind of the next step and for us then to go say uh, hey, we want funding for this because um, yeah, because it's, it will help a, a whole neighborhood be accessible as well as a school and, yeah.
What's the, what's the name of that plan, so I can look it up?
Uh, I think it's the active transportation plan.
On the website under PDF something, something?
Yeah, I mean, if you write down your email address there, then I'm happy to send that to you.
I really appreciate it.
Yeah. If you could just come up here so that the online audience can hear you as well.
So um, this is kind of back to the housing situation. Is there um, any lots, you know, there's not a lot of lots in town, uh, especially inappropriate to deal with us. Is there anything like off limits, and I'm really looking to win for it? Um, I don't know if that's completely off the table, or is that something the county's actually contemplating on building on?
Right, so you're talking about uh, wing spread over there in Aptos, um, kind of above Potbelly? Right, right. Uh, that, that's off limits, I mean, as far as I understand, that was actually voted on um, by uh, the, as a citizen ballot initiative at some point, and yeah, there's, it's completely off limits.
I'm John, and I'm a San Jose, nineteen seventy-five, still in San House. A lot of traffic problems that people are experiencing starts right there on Porter Street. The average speed on uh, Main Street, Porter, and Glen Haven is forty miles an hour. And it needs CHP, I thought it was CHP. They also said it's common to write citations fifty-five to sixty miles an hour. Understanding that South Main and North Main have elementary schools with signs visible five hundred feet. So the infrastructure is there, and Jan Hughes promised us traffic coming devices, chokers, parking, but they went and planted all the trees, which took the parking up, so people jam up the residences, and then when asked, why don't you go park in town? Because I can't get out. So the traffic problem is post twenty-five, it's an enforcement issue with CHP. Then the U-Haul folks and that, the county code enforcement went in and cleaned up, moved eleven vans into four-hour parking on South Main Street. For one week, two weeks, they sit there in front of the four-hour maximum. And the main part, I, I called them today. So then we had the issue when they, it's minor, but it's our village. When they do the street sweeping a couple of days ago, they stop on the bridge, go around the trees, go back, make a U-turn, if you go look at Borja de Bridge, there's no drainage.
Mm-hmm.
The leaves are so packed up, and all you've got to do is put it in park, get your rake and clean up the leaves. It's an absolute mess. The young lady that was talking about the crosswalk over on Porter, I called you on that one too. That is a handicap crosswalk, it was so bad. It was flooded, and it was flooded per week. So the maintenance and efforts that Public Works is putting into maintaining what we've already got falls very short. We talked about the traffic. On any given weekday, it starts there and it goes all the way up the hill. And Old Santa's Road, and Porter Street, and Port Domenica. So when we talked about it, you've ordered it to track engineering. I'm not a civil engineer, I'm not structural engineer, I'm not an engineer, I'm in town every day. So the engineers came out and fixed it by doubling and tripling the red light on in South Main Street. The traffic now goes all the way back up down South Main and back up all the way up there. And then the right turn lane, what a gentleman was talking about? You can't get on SoCal Drive because that lane goes all the way up there. We are in super gridlock. But those are traffic engineers, then went and adjusted tires. It's worse, significantly worse. I'm not an engineer, but I don't need a computer or a CAD generated event. Take all the left turn lanes out and make it two full lanes, two full lanes, two, we talked about that. All this fancy stuff is compromising and compounding the problem. It's a mess. This is all good steps toward one. Thank you for doing all this, but we're not addressing SoCal Village. It's a mess.
Okay, so what, what you're asking for, John, is to give increased priority to Main Street and SoCal San Jose Porter for it to, to turn on to, you're basically to have a green, you're saying that SoCal Drive is getting too much priority right now? And you're, and the.
Village, if you look at SoCal Village, it's a mess. If we go to Capitola Village, very, very well managed traffic flow problems, open parking spaces. We went and planted trees down there, which tore the sidewalks up. And it's flooding some of the stores because there's no drainage, because there's no maintenance from Public Works.
Mm-hmm.
So put the parking back, and that young lady is very right. They're cutting through the back of all the stores there against traffic, that's a code enforcement issue. Um, I don't think we're managing the assets and the values we have of SoCal, but we're doing all this global fancy stuff. And all these people are living in a parking lot, and it is really bad. And like I said, in the mornings and the evenings, I'm out walking, a lot of these people, I know, we do a lot of walking. It is so glaringly obvious. You don't need an engineer, you need common sense. That's it, and I know you can't fix it today, but what those guys did for the traffic engineering, tripled the traffic problem downtown. And this is Highway Two, and that's Highway One. That's.
Yeah.
I know you're working, and I, I know you're trying to survive it, but we're losing the quality of the village that draws here.
Okay, I'll look at the, what's changed and what we need to either change back or, or dial in to get cars moving better through the
With the left turn lanes.
Through the village, yeah, we did, we did look at that with Public Works and uh, the study says that that will not actually improve things.
The study? Does that answer? The study? It's obvious, turn your computer off and go stand down, down there on a Monday morning or a Thursday afternoon.
Thanks.
Okay.
I didn't offer.
Uh, uh, I hear you, well, you, the solution you offered was get rid of the left-hand turn lanes.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
And um, the um, getting that first responder fire station out. They threw up, threw up, which increases reflex time, increases response time, which the person they call nine-one-one. They need to be there within four to six minutes.
Mm-hmm.
And they are in green walk, five, seven days.
Yeah. Alright, yeah, and also, uh, uh, we'll also look at those leaves, I, I've have requested multiple times, so those get cleaned up, so. Yeah, over by, uh, play it again.
The crosswalk by um, the post office in San Antonio. It has lights, but the lights are in the road, and they've been driven over so much that they don't flash anymore again, although it's a sidewalk, not at a corner, but in the middle.
Yeah.
It's really hard to see people trying to.
Right, yeah, that, that's, I believe that's one of the, I believe that's one of the locations for that rapid flashing beacon that's at eye level that are a lot more effective, yeah.
And that's like in six months or?
That's part of this SoCal Drive project that I've mentioned, uh, that includes. No, no, it's in phase one, it's fully, fully funded and should be going in.
And you vote on it? Um, I just have to get back to our, you know, we.
I don't have an exact date yet, um, I could, sure.
Not a board supervisor, so?
No, no, it would, it would be a vote by every affected property.
Okay.
Yeah.
You just need to know, like, how it will be seen.
You would, uh, oh, we'll notice it in multiple ways, but ultimately you'll get something in the mail.
Okay.
Um, and if you give me your email address, I can try to give you more specificity about when we expect that to happen.
Okay, I'll, I'm on there, I'll put a note about.
Perfect, thank you. Alright, if there are no other questions here uh, in the live audience, are there any questions online?
We have three questions, um. What, the first being, are the ramp lights on Porter in SoCal going to be upgraded by Caltrans?
Uh, is that like a ramp metering? The ramp lights, does that refer to the three lights that cross over on Forty First or a ramp metering project?
Yeah, unfortunately, the resident did, um, is no longer in the meeting, um, but I just wanted to share the um, question.
But as I said, the lights um, on Forty First that are managed by Caltrans are being upgraded and will be synced with the rest of the smart lights over the next few months. Um, we are not contemplating ramp metering right now, which is where you have those lights directly on the ramps, that's it.
Understood. Um, another question uh, that was received was, what uh, plans are in place to mitigate traffic congestion on Thurber and SoCal Drive once development of the five acre parcel begins? Specifically the.
I guess, every specific project will look at its impacts to um, the surrounding roadways and, and then basically there's a negotiation process with our Public Works Department of what uh, what mitigation efforts that they'll, or, or projects they'll undertake. So that would, um, that discussion would happen when we actually have a development proposal for that parcel.
And then the last question um, that we received was, would sidewalk improvements qualify for federal infrastructure funding?
I don't think it would qualify for federal infrastructure funding, although some of that money would, uh, might come to the state and go into a pool that we could apply for. We, we could submit a grant for in that way.
Thank you, and don't have any raised hands, um, and those were the questions that were asked uh, during the presentation and in-person discussion.
Okay, great, if we have, are there any other questions here?
Oh, I just want to, I just want to also mention like this gentleman said, the, the traffic on North Main Street right here, I mean, the speed of traffic is just, it's, 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 it's like sixty, fifty miles an hour. I don't know what you would that, but um, it's great that we are small, because there, of course, it's a small place there. It's pretty bad, I mean, um, enforcement, I guess, there, there's not any other plans with that area? Um, to help anything with that.
There, I haven't seen it.
I talked to police officer about speed bumps, he was mentioning, you know, the worst impact for stopping and um, going over the ones, but.
Can you get CHP out there?
Yeah, at least, at least it means.
Yeah, yeah, we could.
Enforcement there, it's really bad, and you're talking like, I don't understand what the people are coming up. Can't figure it out, like, in three ways.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm trying to think about, you know, Main Street here.
Yeah.
Just wanted to.
Well, thank you for letting me know, I haven't seen any particular plans to, like, for infrastructure to slow traffic on, on North Main, although we can certainly consider it. Um, but, I mean, for starters, yeah, we can get CHP out there, we have a, a new and eager CHP officer for the area, so uh, I'll, I'll highlight that it's an issue, a problem area. I, I heard you on Glen Haven as well, yeah.
We did receive uh, one more question from the online audience from Marla. Um, and her question was, are the one hundred thousand um, dollar bridge structures at the farm park ever going to be used or moved? Or will my neighbors and I be looking at them until we sell our homes?
Great, great question, Marla, yeah, we, I've, I've been talking to our parks director about a couple of different options uh, for those bridges. Um, so, ye- yeah, I, I know they're an eyesore and uh, looking to put them to work somewhere else other than sitting in and rusting in your backyard.
Um, so I've got two things on my mind, one is the way that this building is um, is built, uh, as North Main and SoCal, it blocks any pedestrians. So um, when, for example, people go across through their truck behind, cars whip around and don't make stops and leave. Put a mirror, something, I don't know what else you can do, but it's really unsafe. Um, because.
Yeah.
You need a note for an employer, it's really bad.
Yeah.
And the second thing is, um, we just, we had a tragedy with um, new school and verbal um, die this summer, and we're there. Um, I did a bridge on Morrissey right here, and there's a splatter of red paint. And it's, um, we have students that live in the, in the neighborhood, you know, around um, below Santa Cruz Gardens, they live over here, they're, they're driving past that. It's, it could be so easily cleaned up, painted over, it's a, it's a, it's a sad reminder um, to the students going to the bridge. Just on the ground there, there's, there's a red, somebody, and it hasn't been cleaned up.
Sorry, it's a, okay, so red, red paint? On what?
On the bridge, the more, the, um, right by the oil can, Henry's.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, I think I'm about to, oh yeah, go, go ahead. I, I'm running low on batteries and I might uh, lose the online audience, but, but you're welcome to keep asking questions as long as you want here in the live.
Curiosity, anything else, we talked about this new um, senior care facility.
Mm-hmm.
That's like the, the Lighthouse Church location, is that, did I do that correctly?
Right, uh, Inner Light Ministries, um, roughly around where the farm park is, kind of Sin Lane there, on the other side of the street. Um, an eighty unit senior care and memory care facility is.
Is that a private?
Yeah, it's a, a private development proposal and facility.
You don't think the developer is on that?
Um, not off the top of my head, but I can get you the name of the developer if you're interested.
Involved in senior care facility now, so.
Mm-hmm. Sure, yeah, I can get that for you.
It's starting to sound a little bit.
Martin. You're lucky.
Yeah. Okay, if there's no further questions, I'll bring the meeting to a close, I'll stick around if you have other um, questions or, or comments you want to share with me privately. Thank you, everyone.